Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30 and I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Trying to give you enough time to turn around, Nelson. See the flag. All right, let's see. The usual reminder to everyone, make sure your microphone is turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you and our minute taker can hear. Our next planning board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for February 4th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Memorial Room, which is this room. Unusual, two in a row over here, huh?
Yeah.
Evicted again. Let's see. Nelson, you're an alternate, so we'll put you in for a voting position. Everybody else is a full member.
You're an alternate.
You're an alternate too, so we'll put you in for a voting member as well. That leaves us with a quorum, so we've got enough people to do business. Let's see, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second? This motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? All 5-0-0 to adopt the consent agenda. If anyone is here for the item four, the David Widdemore Conceptual Discussion Regarding a Subdivision and a Barn Dominion, there's a request to continue that item and I expect the board would continue that and you probably don't have to stick around for that if that's what you're here for. With that in mind, item three on our agenda is CMI Leasing Corporation as the applicant and Calica LLC as the owner. Conceptual discussion regarding a proposal to construct a 44,500 square foot warehouse for a waste recycling facility and a 55,500 square foot warehouse for a municipal solid waste sorting facility. Both warehouses are proposed with associated office space and other site improvements. The parcels are located at the end of Star Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Opera Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3D-1 Lots 4 and 4-1. It's Case Planning Board 2025, number one. How about that, the first of the year? Colleen, is there anything that we need to know for you from the applicant?
Not specifically, this is just a conceptual hearing, so staff asks that you just listen and there's no going to be motions for acceptance or continue or anything like that. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you for that. Okay, so for the benefit of the public who isn't necessarily familiar with the process, a conceptual discussion like this is an opportunity for the applicant to come forward, tell us what they're thinking of proposing and find out if the planning board has any concerns or feedback that it would like to give. It is not a proposal. There can be no approvals here tonight, but we will certainly take public input from anybody that wants to weigh in on it. But this isn't a proposal that could be voted on even if it was our will to do so. And so it's necessary that you urge that we vote yes or no or any other way for that. It's information gathering for the applicant's benefit. With that in mind, please introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Pruney and Pearlman in Nashua.
Grace is already opening her door. Touch your microphone. Touch the button on there.
It should be bright green.
Really bright, there you go.
Okay. Thank you. Got it, thank you. Again, Andy Pearlman, attorney with Pruney and Pearlman of Nashua, here on behalf of Recycling Associates. And we are here to tell you about this project that we've just started working on for about two months or so. And we are looking for your input, your feedback. Tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like. Let us have it. Our team, let me just do a quick introduction of our team. Sitting behind me is Michael Volucci, the principal with his father of Recycling Associates. They've been doing, they've been owning and operating Recycling Associates for decades. They're currently working out of the facility in Nashua, which you can see as you drive on the highway, FEA return pike across from the Nashua High School fields, their practice fields, their football fields, across from the fields. On the eastbound side of, or the eastern side of the highway, you'll see Recycling Associates' facility. And they are bursting at the seams and so they are looking to find new space, more space for their operations and Mike Volucci can, we'll tell you about that when he comes up in a moment. Sitting at the table with me is Doug Broder of Meridian Land Services. With us tonight is Bill Frisella of North Point Construction Management, the project builder. Mark Pearlman of Pearlman Real Estate is also here. He put the whole deal together with the two owners, CMI Leasing Corp. and Calica Limited Liability Company. We have two folks who are not here, because it's a little too preliminary. Jason Plord of VHB is going to be our traffic engineer on this project. You folks may have seen Jason over the years. And we're bringing on George Holt of Ares Engineering, who specializes in solid waste permitting with DES. And he's been in touch with DES a lot over the past few days. So we had a meeting with your, all of your staff in the middle of December and your staff, they were very good to us in short order. They pulled together, I don't know, we had like 10 folks there from that meeting and really gave us a good idea of how to approach this. So let me talk about the property a little bit and then I'll walk you through the proposals and the permitting path that we see and then Doug can speak to the more details on the plan. The property that we have under agreement with the two owners is two lots. There's a big lot and a small lot. The CMI Leasing Corp. owns the big lot that you can see behind you. But, and the small-
Move around, Brian.
The small lot to the south is owned by the Calica Limited Liability Company. The Calica piece is critical because the Calica parcel provides, well, we hope that it provides our access over the railroad, which I'll tell you about in a moment. We have two lots and what Doug is going to talk about is we are proposing a lot line relocation and there is a method to the madness. Can you go, do you have the other slide? You just have this one?
Just this one.
Okay. If you can picture, you can see the dash line between the two lots, the small lot on the south. If you can picture that dash line moving upward in between the two buildings, roughly where that sewer easement is, that is what we will be proposing to be the two lots. One lot for the northern building, one lot for the southern building. And what we're proposing is the lot line adjustment such that the Recycling Associates' operation that they have currently in Nashua would move to the northern building, to that building that you see there. Mr. Chairman, you called out square footages in the announcements as it was posted. This is very preliminary. It's roughly ballpark where the buildings are going to command for square footage and the number of dock, loading docks, whatnot, but that could change, you know, as the plans get further developed. But, so the northern building would be for the Recycling Associates, their current operations. And then the southern building, if we have success in various permitting and working with the railroad, would be for a new municipal solid waste operation, again, that Mike will walk you through what that entails. And the use of that property and how everything's kind of contained indoors and Mike will kind of walk you through that. We have another team that's not with us tonight working on the crossing. The petition for a crossing order is being filed this week with DOT. And the way that works is a petition gets filed with the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation then notifies all pertinent parties, mainly CSX, the railroad. And then the DOT, if the process gets moving along, will take approximately about a year to consider the crossing request. And if they are inclined to grant a crossing request, then have it designed while still under the jurisdiction of DOT so that DOT is assured that we will have a safe crossing for the proposed use. And so that is a process that's just beginning this week. And, you know, if this project moves along, we will certainly keep it down to price of how we're making, how we're making out with DOT. We have a significant permitting path in front of us, not only with you folks, but before I get to you folks, I have to, I may have a trip to the zoning board because recycling centers and municipal solid waste are not specified uses in the I-1 district. And so I may have a trip to the zoning board for, just to get the use squared away. We have a number of permits to obtain through DES. The, you folks are familiar with Shoreland Protection Act permits and AOT permits. Those are fairly routine for projects of this size along the river. What doesn't come along very often is a solid waste permit. And we were just in touch with DES today and they gave us the path and the process to get there and they say, you know, it's going to take, you know, between a year and two years to get the solid waste permitting through and approved by DES, assuming that they approve it. So then, if we have zoning squared away, we then come back to you folks with a site plan and a lot line relocation. We have the Lower Merrimack River Advisory Committee to work with as well. And this project will include a whole host of studies, hydrogeologic, geotechnical studies. We're not sure about groundwater monitoring, but that may come into play, that may not come into play. So that's my kind of overall high level introduction of what we hope to bring to the town if we have some success along the way. And so if I may, I'm going to have Doug talk a little bit about some more plan details and I'm going to have Mike Volucci describe to you more about the operation, number of vehicles and employees and all that good stuff. So, Doug Broder.
Doug Broder with Meridian Land Services. As Andy pointed out, you know, this is a preliminary plan, but we have done some background investigation on the property. Just to get your bearings, Star Drive is here. It kind of has this little circuitous curve to it. Railroad crossings here, this is CSX Railroad, Merrimack River to the east. The way the site's been designed is we're trying to separate the tractor trailer traffic from normal passenger car traffic by having them go around the site in this fashion. This would be a spin circle here, obviously loading docks along the, depending on how you look at it, I'll call this the rear of the building, but another feature Andy pointed out, there's an easement that goes through the property here. It's a drainage easement that serves one of the properties to the west. I don't know which one exactly, but that's the primary reason we separated the buildings was, well, it's not unheard of, it's not a good situation if you have a utility going under a building and you have an issue with it. In terms of shoreline setbacks, I did put them on here. The red line here is the 250-foot shoreline protection buffer. The next one ends 150-foot woodland buffer and then the 50-foot waterfront buffer adjacent to the river. I did think it was noted in your staff report regarding the 250-foot shoreline buffer, that solid waste is prohibited within it. However, in discussions with DES, they agreed that the solid waste portion of this site is restricted to the buildings themselves as that's the only place solid waste is being placed and processed. However, there's a further restriction in RSA 483B where you can't have any tow slopes within the 150-foot buffer. So for all intensive purposes, that means you can't grade or disturb within that 150 buffer with a solid waste use on the property. We're planning on putting stormwater basins on the eastern side of the site adjacent to the river. Our preliminary soils analysis shows that it's very deep coarse sands in this area and it's most likely there'll be infiltration basins. Other than that, we did do a wetland assessment. There are no wetlands on the site other than obviously the river and that's kind of it, unless you have any specific questions.
Yes, if I could just point out some other things. We, the municipal solid waste building, the southern building, we are showing a railroad siding, a railroad spur into that building. The intent there is for the municipal, unlike the Recycling Associates, which would be a smaller operation compared to the municipal waste, the municipal waste building, the product would come in and then ultimately load it onto train tracks, train cars, and then shipped off to Pennsylvania and Ohio. And again, I don't want to speak for Mike, I could get ahead of myself, but I would have Mike Volucci speak to that. And again, this is a very preliminary design. We're just showing it to show that, to show so people are aware that, you know, we're considering a railroad spur. And it may be that that railroad spur goes through the building and connects back, you know, south of the building as we develop this further. But again, we just wanted to show folks, you know, this is what we're thinking right up front. You will see another little building on the, yep, there he is, right there. That is the waste station as trucks come in. That's part of the whole operation for both the recycling and the municipal solid waste. Talking with staff, we may have significant upgrades to Star, the Star Drive water line for fire protection. It may be, it may be increased width of the water line, or diameter rather, or it could be a booster pump, we're not quite sure. Again, we're still early on in this process. We, I believe we're confident that the sewer is going to work, you know, as is. We're not going to run any additional sewer lines, but again, subject to confirmation. But the Star Drive water line or booster pump is an issue for us that we're going to have to address. The traffic, Mike will tell you about the vehicles, but in talking with traffic engineer Jason Plord, while the numbers sound like a lot of trucks and cars coming and going every day, Jason assured me that as long as those cars and trucks are spread out over the day and not hitting at AM and PM peak, you know, we're probably going to be okay. But again, traffic's steady to follow. And so before we step back, I open up to questions or comments before Mike gets up and tells us more about Recycling Associates?
Pardon me while I skip back over here.
Thank you for that. I do have questions and all of that, but I want to hear more about the operations first, so I'd love to hear your presentation about the operations.
How you doing, everybody? I'm Michael Volucci, Vice President of Recycling Associates. Recycling Associates is my family's company. I've been doing this for now three generations. Started with my grandfather. And Recycling Associates provides recycling services to corrugated manufacturers, production facilities, envelope manufacturers, e-waste facilities, the food industry, hospitality industry and different recycling plants, document destruction facilities, really anybody that has a need and has a lot of recyclable material. Also a lot of municipalities in New Hampshire now. We do that via using drop trailers, live load trailers, roll-off services, and we even do document destruction, box truck services as well. We have a whole host of domestic and export mill relationships and we have contracts with paper mills to supply them with top quality fiber to offset their pulp costs. Currently, we have about 35 employees. We run about two shifts, about six days a week and close to 24 hours a day, five days a week, and then usually a half shift on Saturdays. We have eight trucks currently, but we're looking to add more. Drivers are constantly, it's a tough thing to find nowadays, CDL drivers, so constantly looking to add more drivers. And Recycling Associates, what we do is we bail paper, we segregate different types of paper, cardboard, we supply equipment to companies looking to further their recycling program and get more out of it. And we provide them guidance on how to better their recycling programs, get more money out of it and lower their carbon footprint. That is the gist of what Recycling Associates does. As far as the MSW facility and the future expansion, their clients would be municipalities, independent haulers and public haulers. Rough traffic flow would be 150 to 250 trucks a day. Customers would be out in Ohio, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. We plan on putting in a MSW recycling system to retrieve several different items of recycling out of the MSW stream to lower the percentage of trash, the overall trash, leaving the state. But in all in all, trash would be leaving the state, which is the goal, via rail.
You mentioned of Pennsylvania, Ohio and other states, that's the destination for the trash or the source?
The destination.
Is there any source, trash sourced from out of state that would be brought here?
No.
So this is going to be the main waste stream from municipalities where they have a transfer station in their town, they load it all up in trucks and bring it here?
So some of our direct customers would be municipalities. We currently do, I want to say 15 to 20 different municipalities directly. We also have customers that are independent haulers that have relationships with municipalities and several different companies. So, you know, they are our customers. They bring us cardboard. Currently, we obviously don't take in MSW, but we take in a lot of cardboard every day. So, you know, they would have the opportunity to bring a separate company, a separate building, MSW. So we would be in no way competing with them because we don't have trucks to service MSW, but they would be a customer of that, of that business.
So what happens inside your building on the solid waste side, the recycling, I guess I understand at least a bit, on the solid waste, what's happening inside the building?
Inside the building, there would be at least one bailing machine and several conveyors, other pieces of equipment, trommel, eddy currents. It'd be a sorting system, probably about 15 employees that would assist that sorting system in removing several different items, aluminum, cardboard, paper, different types of plastic. And after gaining some revenue, we'd probably add some pieces of equipment to further reduce the amount of waste leaving the state. You can add composting equipment, add wood removal equipment. There's a pretty far way you can take it.
So composting takes, is a pretty big footprint and it's open air, it's not inside a building, or at least it could be. Tell me about that, where would that be?
So composting, I'm currently learning more about it, but it's a, I don't want to speak out of term with composting because again, I'm learning more about it and I have to, you know, learn more about it, I'll say. But you could go into, you know, certain plastics can go into biodiesel. Composting can go into, you know, organics and food products, it can be bagged as flowerpot mix. But MSW, as I'm learning, when you run through a trommel, you can remove a certain amount of dirt, soil, it just comes inherently with it. So that dirt just falls to the ground and it'll go on a train with the MSW. If you remove that dirt, you remove that waste, you remove the cost, thereby you create compost out of it. It becomes a sellable item or at worst a zero item.
Is there either water supply or sewer connection that's associated with the MSW processing? Does it use water in any of its processes?
It doesn't though.
How about just leachate from the MSW?
The leach, there is a leaching system that can go on the, on the, there's a couple different leaching systems I've seen. None of them have been necessary when you're just bailing MSW. It's used when you're bailing complete wet waste. It's a completely separate item, used in like pulp manufacturers and waste plants that I've seen hooked up on systems, but I've never seen them used on MSW because it's not a wet, it's not a wet product. So I don't believe that's used in this, in this application. I've been in several MSW plants and I've never seen water as a problem besides, you know, if it rains, you get a little bit of dampness, mostly even from the equipment for forklift tires and stuff.
How do they deal with PFOA in the waste stream?
PFOA in the waste stream? I'm not familiar with how they deal with PFOA in the waste stream.
Meaning what, it comes in to us?
Yeah.
Like as far as the drainage of it and the recirculation?
Well, hopefully not drainage, but it's going to come in in your waste and so you're either going to ship it out with it or you're going to separate it out and process it in some way.
We could definitely get back to you on-
We're just starting this.
Understood.
So we have this, this is why we, we want to hear these, those questions.
You're looking for questions?
Yeah. Well, for example, we had such a good meeting with staff and we said, what do we do about PFAS? And they said, it can't leave the site. Whatever you do, it doesn't leave the site. All right, so that's an interesting question where a hauler brings it in, all right, brings it into us, all right, knowing or unknowing, all right? So then what do we do with that? We don't have an answer to that, but we will.
What's the PFOA stand for?
That's PFAS.
Yeah, big, long biochemistry word for bad stuff. There's some technologies that are out there that are meant to be able to treat or biodegrade it or whatever. I don't know exactly how they work or what they're about, but I've got a client that does solid waste up north and kind of get little exposure to it here and there.
If it's something that we get in that we're not supposed to be dealing with, usually we call it a safety clean or a vertive or somebody that's supposed to be dealing with that stuff.
So it's pervasive in the waste stream, it comes from plastics?
Yep.
And you can't, you can't not have it. And it'll be there, but it'll be there in trace elements. It's not sort of like, oh, well, we'll scoop out the PFOA. It's, and if it doesn't leave the site, then at some point you're accumulating PFOA in town. I'm not sure I love that plan.
No.
Yeah. Anyway, if you don't have the answer or you need more information, that would, ultimately the whole point of a preliminary discussion like this is to, you know, point out some issues.
Yep.
And so if you came back with an application, you'd have to know your answers on PFOA upside down and backwards for what was going to happen with those. So 150 to 200 trucks of either recycled material municipal solid waste getting to Star Drive. Star Drive's not particularly close to an interstate exchange and so these trucks are basically on DW Highway in a relatively commercial and residential part of town. And I want to understand impacts of that. I'm sure that the world will not love that idea.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to be perfectly honest, we thought we were close to a interstate. Granted, we're going up and down Daniel Street Highway, but it's one light to the highway on the northbound side and I think it's two lights heading south, two traffic signals.
So you're farther than one for going north, you're a long way from going north. You're not that far from exit 11, but you're not that close either.
Yeah.
A lot of, and 200 trucks, especially if you're doing them 24 hours a day, you know, 10 an hour, all around the clock is a big stream of trash trucks.
Well, we wouldn't, we would definitely not be operating around the clock. We would only be operating between the hours of, you know, 7:00 AM to 4:00 or 5:00 PM.
So you mentioned your facility operates 24 hours a day though, so is it just they don't have trucks that come in in the middle of the night or what, how's that work?
Correct, yes. We run processing to get caught up on the, our trucks run 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then when we have a yard jockey, that yard jockeys them around the yard to get caught up on what we don't process.
So if you call it 12, that's 11 hours, but if you called it 12 hours for 200 trucks, then it's going to be 20 an hour during the daylight hours.
So the, so the Recycling Associates facility is about 50, 50 trucks. The MSW side would be the 150 to 200 trucks. Those trucks are- Those trucks are outside of Recycling Associates, um, employees. Those hundred and fifty to two hundred trucks would be coming in between the hours of, um, say, six AM to five PM. It wouldn't be coming in outside those hours.
No, understood. Um, but it's certainly a lot of trucks with the MSW. Um, one of the things that would be, uh, high on my mind if we were dealing with a real application is uh, going to do a site visit at your place in Nashua and having a look at it with our own eyes. And understanding what's going on with it and whether there's any history on that site with any, um, E- DES issues of any kind, whatever that might be, um, on your current site. So you're talking about moving your site from there or just having a new site and having two sites?
Moving our site from there and having an additional site that does MSW.
Okay, so, but your, your Nashua site would close and this would be your recycling?
Yep.
Okay. And then you'd add the MSW to it?
Uh, can I just, I mean, if I could jump in. Remember Doug, Doug and I were talking about the, we're having the, the lot line adjustment. So that there, there are two separate lots, there's the Recycling Associates lot and the MSW lot. It may well be that, um, we never get the MSW. If we can't make a railroad spur, if we can't get it permitted through DES. And the thinking there is to move, is to adjust the lot lines because that would allow that southern lot itself to then be for sale or rent um, to a third party. Alright, so that, that would be the backup plan. Mike's vision is with respect to the MSW, but our backup plan is to have a separate lot, uh, just available, um, for third parties.
Yeah. I, I, um, having only thought about your plan for a couple of hours um, and obvi- obviously tons, tons more to learn over the, the time that it would come to, to get processed. Um, the MSW is on my mind a lot more than the recycling. I think the recycling is probably relatively boring. But, um...
You're right.
But as to the MSW side of things, that's, that's where, uh, at least my initial concerns are. Now, somebody may, you know, from the public, uh, offer some testimony that changes my mind on the recycling piece as well and raises some concerns that I wasn't thinking of, but it's the MSW that's mostly on my mind as we go through this. And if your proposal came forward without it, um, I don't think anybody on my side of the table would be upset about that consequence.
Are you doing the MSW in Nashua now?
No.
No? Okay. So we have no history or experience with that?
No, but it's, it's a challenge. New Hampshire's got basically three landfills that stuff can go to and if it doesn't go to one of those, you gotta truck it out of the state or put it on train, get it out of state. Almost nothing is leaving the state now. Actually, New Hampshire imports a little bit. So those are in Rochester, in Success, which is up near Berlin, and, um, uh, Dalton, Bethlehem, that fight are where they're at now. But, um, tho- that capacity of those entities may become more and more scarce and shipping stuff out of state may become more the vogue. Um, Nashua actually has landfill for Nashua in the middle of the city, surprisingly, and doesn't upset much, much on the, in the world, but, there, you know, if they fill theirs and they need to do something else, they're gonna be looking to send it on a train somewhere. Um, so, I'm not sure that I wanna be the host of the, the terminal for the train, but somebody will have to be um, in the future for dealing with the trash. Any other, you know, contaminants that are in the MSW stream that you have concerns about? Um, construction and demolition debris, lead paint, asbestos, all of that kinda fun?
No, that, that's really considered hazmat. Um, C and D is a completely separate item. We're not gonna take in C and D.
What's C and D?
Construction demolition.
Yeah. I don't know.
So I know that you're indoors and, um, that's gonna make a huge difference for you. For the e- outdoor landfills, birds and animal management is a thing. Um, is that an issue with your, well, you don't know with the MSW 'cause you didn't have one of those, but um, does it cause any issues with the recycling?
No.
Is there any point where the materials are, uh, kept outside or trucks with open tops that are not ready to be loaded into the building or parked on site? I know you got a whole fleet of park, truck spaces at the end of the lot here.
Um, so those are, all the truck park spaces are just for Recycling Associates. Um, as I mentioned, I'm not gonna have any MSW trucks, um, as part of our company. All the MSW trucks will just be outside haulers coming to us. So, um, any trucks that might even pick up a load of, um, you know, segregated bottles and cans or anything will be live loaded and transported out immediately. So nothing will be stored on site as part of that business.
Okay, and then the trucks that are bringing you, they're not your trucks, but they're bringing you stuff, are they ever gonna have a, a, a holding pattern or a waiting pattern for them to be able to unload?
No, we're gonna create enough overhead doors that, the goal of this business is to get everybody emptied out right away and get them moving. Because if they want, if they have to wait, they're not gonna wanna dump there.
How do these, this is a little basic, how do these trucks manage the emptying? Are they dump truck styled trucks or are they unloaded with a machine or how do they happen?
There's several different, um, styles. You know, you have your packer trucks, the back door opens and then it pushes out. You roll off trucks, the, um, back door flips open like your, uh, market basket style packer and then it slides out. Um, so there's multiple different types that'll be dumping there.
Some of the ones that show up at the landfill are like the roll-on, roll-off where it's like a dumpster on a frame? Do you have a way of dealing with those and how do those end up, um, working through your system in an efficient way?
Yep, so those just, um, the back door opens and then they tip them straight up in the air, about twenty-eight feet in the air. Um, they back up and then slide forward, the material slides out, similar to a dump truck.
What's the proposed height of your buildings?
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, like thirty-five, forty feet.
Okay. Um, inside your building, is it gonna have like the heavy equipment loaders and things like they do at the transfer station?
Not that, not that big. Um, you know, we'll have skid stairs, we'll have loaders, but we're not gonna have like D nines or anything. But yeah, we'll have, we'll have loaders and skid stairs.
So, um, are these buildings open air or is there ventil, how are they ventilated to run equipment?
Um, the MSW building will be open air. The, um, Recycling Associates, there'll be a dust retrieval system on the document destruction system. But, um, we just, we just heat it with, um, it's just a heated building. We keep the heat on minimum. And it's just closed as often as we can when we're not dumping trucks.
Understood. So if the MSW building is open air, then you are gonna have birds and challenges with that because they're gonna be attracted to the trash?
Um, there's dust and odor control systems. Um, I have several colleagues in the business right now in different states. Um, there's dust and odor control systems that I have not seen any birds, any rodents. They do an excellent job of managing that. Everything goes up the system into train cars so quickly. It doesn't sit on the floor long enough for that to happen. Uh, you know, if, if the stuff is moving correctly, then y- you really don't have those issues.
So I would want to, if you came back with an application, I would want a suggestion for some sites where we could see that happen. If you don't have an MSW, I'd wanna know where, where can I go look at one?
Yeah, absolutely.
And be, in the, in the landfills, the odor control comes from the landfill gas collection system. Pulling the ventilation down through the system. And if you're not gonna be collecting landfill gas, you're not using the same kind of a system that they use. So I'd wanna know what is it that you're doing? Is it some kind of additive that's supposed to, you know, kill the scent? Or, you know, something that they do to manage that and how well does it work and what is that chemical and what impacts does it have?
Yeah, absolutely. Could definitely take you to one of those sites.
Don't know, I, I, I don't know a whole lot about those kinds of odor additives and that sort of thing.
But they, but they deter it out.
Well, it's open air.
I don't know.
So...
So I, I don't know how they manage it, but I'm, I'm, if they don't collect the landfill gas and do something with it, well, it's not a landfill, but um, then it's gonna be adding some kind of a, either deodorizer or something that covers up the odor with something that is less unpleasant or something.
Yeah, it's more of a deodorizer and a, it's a circulation of air, I would say. But yeah, we could definitely take you to a few of those places and you could see it.
Okay. You mentioned thirty-five employees, but I see an awful lot more parking spaces than thirty-five. For the, uh, cars.
So based on your minimum parking calculation?
Okay. So as you come forward with a proposal, if you don't need that many parking spaces, I'm not in favor of paving the world just because of table throughout a number. Propose what you need and ask for a waiver if it doesn't suit the, um, the number of spaces you need. If you do need them, then so be it, but if you don't, um, don't pave the world just because, uh, regulation said so. Is there any sort of, um, leak or contamination in your groundwater treatment system? Anything to separate pollution or anything that might come out of the building or if anybody was concerned about those kinds of things?
We don't know yet. That's where Aries Engineering comes into play. Alright, and we, we haven't really, honestly, we haven't got too very far with those guys, um, so, uh, you know, to be determined.
So, uh, I imagine that your buildings...
Can you ask that again? I thought you dropped that down.
Sure, uh, you've got stormwater, uh, detention ponds between yourself and the river. And I wanna know if there's any kind of pollution control or treatment of anything that might get in there that's, um... Undesirable, yeah, or yeah, how do you keep it out of there is gonna be important. I'm, I assume you're not gonna have floor drains in your buildings 'cause the floor drains would have to go somewhere. Um, and then, um, gas stations and similar facilities have their design so that the spills and things stay inside. Um, and can get cleaned up and not run off the edge of the pavement. So some of the things that I've seen with other landfills is that they regard themselves as being a secure facility. A lot of effort to keep people out that don't belong in there, fences and, you know, that sort of thing. Um, is this a secure facility and if so, how is that controlled?
Do you wanna talk a little bit? Well, currently it's not at, um, um, at the facility in Nashua, although it, it's kinda fenced in, but we can call it, that's a high security. We can certainly fence, uh, you know, just naturally between the railroad, um, and, and the park above us and PSNH below us and the river. We kinda have a natural barrier all around us, but, you know, to the extent that we have to fence and, and gate, we, we could certainly do that.
So I, I think your neighbors are mostly industrial and I don't necessarily think that we make you screen industrial sites from each other. But to the extent that there's any, you know, need for security to keep anyone out that doesn't belong in there, and maybe there isn't. Um, but that's what I'd want you to understand and be able to answer for us if you had that kind of a question. Is there any storage of motor fuels on site? For your own equipment, your own trucks? Uh, how does your skid stairs get fueled?
Um, we have a fuel service that comes for the equipment on site as far as, um, any loaders. Um, forklifts have run off propane, so we have a propane, um, company that comes. The trucks all use Irving, so they get fueled off-site. Um, but no, nothing like that stored on site.
Has there been any discussion with the railroad about the siding?
No. Not yet. We're just starting that process.
Yeah, understood. I, um, seeing that go, um, well sometimes and not so well other times. It's, um, I don't know what the magic is to dealing with the railroad, but some entities have success and some don't. In that. Do you know how volume of train cars, uh, could, could or might be for your...
Attorney Tom Pappas, um, is the attorney is, um, that the seller side has hired to petition the Department of Transportation. And talking with Tom, he tells me two things, that, that there's very low traffic, uh, on this, um, site, um, that are track, trains that go to Budweiser. Uh, there are trains that go to the, uh, fuel, the, um, plant up in Bow and that's about it. The trains themselves go very slow 'cause the quality of the track is, is, is in a, such a state that the trains can't go very fast. Um, and all this works in our favor for, to get it crossing. Um, but what I'm told is very low use, uh, for this, uh, for this train track.
Um, apologize to my board members that I've been hogging the conversation and not giving you any questions, but... Anyone else wanna jump in with questions and concerns?
Please, please, that's why we're here.
I was thinking pretty much along the lines you have, uh, but I've, uh, I had some notes that I made ahead of time and I think you've covered most.
Oh, there you go.
Cut it first.
Okay. Uh, I think you've covered most of the questions that I had come up with, looking at the plan ahead of time. And, uh, one thing you didn't mention and maybe it's not applicable, is there any incineration that goes on in any of this, any of these plants? None of the, nothing gets disposed of into the air. You don't need any air permits, okay. That was the only other thing I had that Bob hadn't already mentioned, so, um, thank you for the opportunity.
Anyone else? Um, I did notice one note I didn't understand. There's, uh, all your parking spaces are, are labeled pedestrian vehicle parking and I don't know what a pedestrian vehicle is, but... Let's see, that's...
It's an e-bike.
Yeah.
Those are just for the employee parking, alright, and...
Yeah, that's what I figured they were, but I just never saw it referred to as a pedestrian vehicle, 'cause pedestrians don't have any vehicle.
I did have one question. Is there a reason why you're moving from Nashua?
Space.
Space.
Oh, okay.
Do you, do you think that this amount of space is going to, uh, last you for a certain number of years or do you think you'll grow out of this space too or...
Um, this should be sufficient. This, this space should be fine.
How much space do you have in Nashua, square footage wise?
The total building, not including the office space, I don't know how much the office space is, um, it's twenty-one thousand square feet.
So you're about doubled, a little bit, but better than doubled. Part of a proposal would have to tell us where you're gonna push snow and store snow and, um, roof drains and your roofs are an acre and an acre and a quarter for the two buildings, so where's all that gonna go?
I'm sorry?
Flat roofs?
Flat or sloped? So, um, wherever you go, I mean, it's, it's, it's an imminently solvable problem, but somewhere on your plan, you have to show where you're gonna put your snow.
Sure.
To get that taken care of. Other quen- questions or comments?
Well, I, uh, one more thing, I, I didn't see the, um, the flood plain. I don't think you're in the flood plain anywhere. The, I'd be interested in the river protection and, uh, you, you touched on that lightly and I would want more detail eventually, but, uh, just to know that you're, uh, you're not in the flood plain anywhere in your construction or with your, uh, holding, uh, basins there for, yeah, you're...
We would, we would need the shoreline protection permits, the alteration of terrain permits, all that.
Yeah, that, that, that was one of the things I picked up early on, but then you got to talking about it and I think you're aware that that would be something we'd be concerned with.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I know that there's, uh, at least one public comment we've received by email and I imagine some other folks would like to weigh in. So we'll, uh, open a public hearing and let me find this email and just read this very short thing, um, from this contact form. This is an email from Pauline Landrigan who sent, um, her message is, "Please reject this proposal as it poses imminent environment safety concerns to our community. How does a business get to tell us what we need on or near concert?" I think that's supposed to be conservation land, but concert land, and ourographer irresponsible. Um, that's the total of that message. So I have that read into the record. Uh, are there any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? If you are...
I did receive another...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did receive another contact form, just, uh, from Heather O- O'Connor. Says, uh, "Please vote no to the proposal tonight." I know this is not a, a proposal and we're not voting, but says, "Please vote no to the proposal of the new recycling plant tonight. The fact that they are trying to manipulate the law to meet the needs to have it put in is unacceptable. Merrimack is losing its small town feel and these companies don't seem to be helping with any tax relief. Please vote no tonight."
Okay.
Andy, could you please forward that to the Community Development Department?
Yeah, so that can get into the record.
Thank you so much.
There, I have another one also.
Okay.
Um...
It's kinda strange they come in to different...
Different angles. I don't know if I didn't get copies of those other ones or, go ahead.
I'll send it to you.
Perfect, thank you.
So you want Jennifer Spillane, okay, sent a message. "I have lived in Merrimack since two thousand and have watched many things flourish, but our environment took a serious hit from St. Gobain being allowed to pollute our town for many years. We also have several superfund sites in town. I heavily oppose addition of a new site..." sites in town. I heavily oppose addition of a new recycling and trash plant in town. Allowing this in, especially along the river, would be a travesty. It would be located near our town aquifers, a park, et cetera. Please don't allow this to happen. Merrimack has been traumatized enough over the last 20 years."
Are you only taking comments from abutters or from the public?
Anybody, anybody. So, we just wanted to finish the email ones, and then anybody that liked the microphone, whoever wants to go first, step up. That microphone is already turned on, so you don't need to do anything. And then, just introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
I will. My name is Raymond Peoples. I'm a state rep from Litchfield, Hillsborough, 14. I was contacted by my constituents about this project. I also just happen to live directly across from that lower building on Route 3A over in Litchfield, across one short farm field. Just to the north of that is one of the state's largest organic farms and also our elementary school. So, we have some concerns, especially around smell, garbage, things going into the river. I served on the Lower Merrimack Valley Authority with Nelson in the past. And anything that's within 500, 600 foot of the river is definitely, needs to be looked at with extra eyes, even though statutorily you can't do that. But you do really have to look at what's going on there. And you brought up St. Gobain's. For years, St. Gobain's rained down, PFOAs on Litchfield, and we're happy to have them or not at this point. But, you know, as this project moves forward, we'd love if you involve us because we really are their next-door neighbors by only the width of the river.
That's a great point. Did you, did you say your name for the record?
Raymond Peoples.
Raymond, you did. I'm sorry. Now that you said it again. That is another point. We would, with all of our applications, make a determination of regional impact, and I would generally support this being found to have a regional impact and notifying our neighbors.
Very concerned about the open-air building and smell and how you control that. And to be honest with you, you know, we have a, the elementary school, the organic farm, a park, and residents right there in that cone of influence. And if you go down the road where the Merrimack Waste Treatment Plant is in Litchfield, you can smell that on the other side of the river. So, it, it may seem like a long ways, but it's right there. So, with that, I'll yield the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peoples. Who else would like to weigh in?
Hollis McGuire, Wilson Hill, Merrimack. And I have, I just found out about this a couple hours ago, like many of us. And I saw a note in the Positive Merrimack Forum. I wrote a short letter. I'll give it to you. I'm going to read it. So, "To the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Town Council, I've lived in Merrimack for over eight years. I formerly lived in Milford, New Hampshire. When I lived in Milford, a major waste management company attempted to deposit Class B sludge as fertilizer in a tree farm. The tree farm was for Christmas trees only, and it sold no edible products. The company that wanted to dump the sludge was paying a large amount to the tree farm owner. It chose the farm because no edible products were sold, as this could be a risk for the consumer. The tree farm was adjacent to an aquifer. The sludge could have easily polluted the water. Once the water is polluted in this way, there is no going back. This situation feels eerily similar. The proposal is in the aquifer district. Although recycling and trash aspires to be clear of contaminants, we know, just from the percentage of recycling rejected from our recycling carriers and the town dump, contaminants are found on a regular basis. Isn't the experience with St. Gobain enough of a lesson with our water? Are we willing to take a risk of aquifer contamination? Almost assured over time. We stopped this project in Milford. We hope we will not need to fight so hard to stop this project in Merrimack. But based on what I have learned so far, it should be stopped." Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your letter. Who is next?
Mike Drewan, Crosswoods Path Boulevard. I just have a couple of questions. He mentioned the dump trucks with the, that have the back that opens, and I'm wondering if those are going to have full covers going down DW, because I've seen trash trucks go down and they have trash flying out the back. That's one question. I'm also wondering about noter because Sklar Park is right above that, abutting it. It's going to reveal part of the trail because according to this, the parking lot's going to abut the trail of Eagle Bluff, which would affect residents that use the property. Bald eagles have also been seen nesting in that part of Sklar. I don't know if they nest in this, this far down, but it's not, you know, so, no, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Drewan. Thank you for the comments. For those of you who are asking questions or posing questions, we'll let the applicant have an opportunity to answer those. We're certainly not going to take on the task of answering questions on their behalf, so we'll just pass them on to them, and we'll hear them and hear the answers and weigh them as you would. Anybody else that wishes to weigh in?
Hi, Katie Little, 73, 73 Pondview. I just had two things, I think that, or maybe three things. Two things that were already mentioned. I live just a little bit north of this property, and I can also smell the waste treatment plant frequently that far up the road. So, I would also be concerned about the, any smells from the facility and the traffic situation at Continental and DW at peak hours. At the interchange of the Everett Turnpike is not great at the moment. I do worry that it would increase, I try not to leave my house around that time because I do worry that it would increase the traffic in that area at peak hours. And I guess my other concern would be like loose waste that gets loose and then maybe blows down towards the river and stays on the site. I, I just have questions about the process for cleaning up waste that might fall out of trucks, like Mike said, and, you know, what the process is for the company to, to maintain the site in, in a clean fashion.
Excellent. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to weigh in? So, tonight is not your only opportunity. As we talked about before, this is a conceptual discussion to provide feedback to the applicant. If they choose to come back for a hearing, there'll be a new public notice with the specifics of whatever they're proposing at that time, and an opportunity for anybody could come back and weigh in on whatever that situation looks like. And they may have their proposals changed significantly based on whatever the feedback is. But tonight is not the last time by any means for people to weigh in and have their say. If there aren't any more public comments, making sure, not seeing any, then we'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant to respond to whatever of the public comments the applicant chooses to. I am particularly interested in covered trucks or trash that comes off of trucks, and especially because those aren't necessarily your trucks, but it's your project that brings them to our town. And how do you manage something that isn't in your truck? But here it is.
If, excuse me. We get calls from time to time, especially because mainly what we haul is paper, paper trim. That's what we haul out of our roll-off trucks. And if we get a call about paper coming out of one of our trucks, and it's anything considerable, I should say, because it is paper, you know, we'll send people out to pick it up. We want to be environmentally responsible. That's who we are and what we do. We're a family-owned company. I want to be responsible to the environment. The reason for, you know, what we're doing with recycling associates is simply because we're out of space. The reason for the MSW plant is because we want to do what's responsible for the environment. It doesn't have anything to do with dumping sludge or some of the other comments that were made. We're, we're a family-owned company, and we want to pull recyclables out of the trash so they don't go into the ground. Reducing the waste is just one of the passions I've always had for many years. And I'm a, I live in Litchfield, New Hampshire, and I want to do what's right by New Hampshire. I know trash coming into New Hampshire is a huge problem for the state. I want to help get it out of New Hampshire. I know we don't have many landfills left. I know Nashua doesn't have much green space left. I know Bethlehem doesn't have many years left. I want to help the state by getting it out of the state. That's what I want to try to do.
Do you, are your trucks covered? They must be because paper would blow out easily, but-
The open tops we have, they have tarp systems on it. All, all open-top roll-off trucks, they have to have tarp or systems off it, or they have to be bungee corded.
They have to use them.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they have to use them. You know, if we get calls of any kind, we, we take them very seriously. We want to keep it upstanding. You know, our name is what we, what we have, and we take it very seriously. But yeah, we, we reply to anything very quickly and responsibly.
So, part of what's on my mind with that, I've had experience with working for a landfill. An outdoor landfill is a mess, and trash blows all over the place, and they have all sorts of fencing and things to catch trash, and crews that go pick up the trash. And it's hard to manage the loose trash. But that's an outdoor facility. I don't know that you'll have quite that degree of problem, but you'll have some that you'll have to attend to for sure. Part of it's on my mind, though, when you talk about open trucks and some of that, that section of Continental Boulevard from the Gulf Station that was recently built to the Common Man, everybody that kind of comes and goes out of Exit 11 is going right through that section. And with the frequency of trucks that you're going to provide, every journey through there will see us, you'll see a truck, you'll see a trash truck. Without exception, there'll be a trash truck every single time you traverse that intersection. And that causes me concern both from odors and, you know, things that spill or pollution or whatever, but also just, you know, the, the impact on the economic value of the town to just sort of have your doorstep always, without exception, truck, trash truck. And it's, and it's, I think the MSW is the thing that's the cause of that more than the recycling. I think trucks with recycled paper, and it could probably come and go without anybody noticing much of a difference in a truck. Although, I still want to go see your facility and make sure that's true.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the MSW is, in my mind, sort of the 10 times more concerning than the, than the recycling business.
That's, that's, we anticipated that very comment, so.
Nelson?
I just did one more thing I wanted to reinforce, Bob, because it was brought up by one of the abutters. That is the proximity to the Sklar Park, which is just adjacent to and north of this. And when you were talking about fencing, you were a little, it wasn't clear to me that we were telling them that we want a good, safe barrier, if you will, for personnel, for kids, or whoever plays in the park, airplane players, that, that's taken care of. Okay, that's a small thing, but I wanted to reinforce it.
Yeah, it's important. The fencing around a landfill looks more like a driving range fences than, than six-foot chain link fences. I mean, they're tall, they're high, they lean in to keep the wind from picking trash up and blowing it out of there. So, if there is a trash containment problem based on things blowing around in the wind, that's the kind of fencing that you have to do to contain it.
Well, you want to keep the people out, too. Keep people from wandering in there. That's all, yeah.
That's a good comment.
The impact on the park, I, I heard the comment about nesting eagles, which is obviously a fantastic natural resource. And I don't necessarily think we've got a regulation that says you have to shape your project around that. But impacts on those natural resources are going to be important.
Just on the bald eagles, Mr. Chairman, part of the permitting process with the state is we'll have to do a wildlife and habitat assessment and consultation with Fish and Game as well as the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau-
Okay.
-for rare threatened and endangered species, which bald eagles are certainly on that.
Yep. There, thank you for that comment. Okay. Other comments and questions? So, I don't know if you may have any number of paths forward after meeting tonight, and it may be a long one, or it may be something you, you know, if you said that it's going to take a year to sort out the railroad crossing, you're probably not going to spend a lot of money doing engineering for site plans until you have those kinds of questions answered. So, it may be a while before you come back, but, you know, those are the kinds of concerns that we have, and, you know, certainly want to have the, you know, real good opportunity to address those and-
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, members, thank you very much. This is exactly what we wanted. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time. All right. I'm glad we caught you on a slow night so we could have the discussion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
I love your socks.
Thank you.
Can't see it. There we go. All right. I got him.
Thanks, everyone.
For those that are working your way out of the room, can keep the conversations low so that we can continue our meeting, or move the conversations out in the hallway?
I've also been admiring your socks.
We'll just hang on for a minute or two before we pick up the next agenda item. Let this guy scoot. Yeah, continue in some minutes and a couple of-
Yes. Oh, I sure do.
Other items of concern type stuff.
He's still going, he's still going in the line.
Ninety-two.
He's a great guy.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Good to see you. Thank you.
So, do we run into a little more, a little more?
Thank you. Okay, let's continue with our meeting. Item four on our agenda is David Widmore as the applicant and owner. This is a conceptual discussion regarding a proposal to subdivide the subject parcel and then construct a three-unit barn dominium building and another two-unit building on the existing house lot and a 48-unit elderly multifamily workforce housing building and associated site improvements on the proposed lot. The parcel's located at 381 DW Highway and the R4 Residential by soils, elderly housing and aquifer conservation districts, tax map 4D3, Lot 92, Case Planning Board 2025-2. And this is one where we've got the applicant sort of withdrawing it, not necessarily looking for us to continue it to a date certain. They may come forward again, but they don't know when or where, what they might have on their mind when they do. So, with that in mind, if they've withdrawn it, there is no action required of us, right?
Yeah, I guess just table indefinitely.
Should we table it? That's different.
Yeah, it says this conceptual discussion will be tabled indefinitely.
Okay.
I will still move.
Move, move to table it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of tabling it indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? 500. Item five on our agenda, in accordance with the provisions of RSA 675:7, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to consider amendments to its fee schedule as authorized by RSA's 67444 Roman numeral 5 and RSA 676: 4IG. Colleen, is there anything that we should know before we take up the questions of fee increases?
So, this one is a, by, per request of the town manager, Robert was asked to do an analysis of not only our town, but several towns around us that are comparable in size to see where our planning board fees fall along with those other communities. Some we found some shortfalls where we were a lot lower than other communities, others we found we were kind of in line, some were just minor increases, and then some, I believe, just wording changes. So, Robert's report has plenty of specifics on each fee increase, why it's happening, stuff like that.
Okay. So, we all have a memo in our package dated January 17, 2025, to me and, and the members of the planning board, from Robert. It looks like there's a proposed increase in the minimum fee, no change to the abutter notice fee, a fee for lot mergers, a new fee for conceptual plan reviews, a increase in the fee for conditional use permits, home occupations, and auxiliary dwelling units, an increase in the fee for lot line adjustments, an increase in the subdivision? No, is that, that's not an increase, is it?
Uh, yes.
This is.
It would be the application fee that Robert proposes, plus the $100 per lot, plus the abutter notices.
Okay. So, increase- So, increase in subdivisions, no change to the fees for waivers of full site plan review, and then the site plan fee, it looks like kind of a, just a different way of calculating that.
Uh, yes.
And then, on the back of the last page, no change in the fee for amended site plans. And then, I assume the narrative between the tables is explanation to, from Robert, as to the increases and adjustments. My initial impression is our, our fees should be in keeping with what the, you know, costs and the work that has to get done on these, and it should be in keeping with other towns. None of these strike me as being particularly high or onerous. Sometimes if you've got a big proposal, you might have a big fee, but that's because you got a big proposal. Life goes on. And I, I feel like weighing in and tweaking one of these or two of these up or down is just sort of out of our lane quite a bit, and just rely on our staff, and either agree with it or not. But if you wanna talk about any of these individuals, certainly have at it. If not, then the action is suggested at the back of page four on this. Is there discussion? Anyone have any discussion or questions?
I think we crossed that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And we technically have to open it to the public and close it to the public, too.
Thank you. It is on the agenda as a public hearing. There's nobody here, but we'll do that anyway. How, when was the last time the fees were adjusted?
Um, I don't think Robert touches on that, so I am not a hundred percent sure, but I'm sure it's been a long time.
I don't recall ever doing this in my time as chair of the board.
We didn't do it in this format, anyway. We, I think we've made some adjustments here and there, but nothing of this scope, and I have no problem with this, I think.
I don't have any problem...
It's still the homework.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either. I would just suggest that we recommend to the department, or to Robert, that there be some calendar of two years, or something like that, to, to standard review, and update if it needs it, every two or three, or some number.
That's a good idea.
So that it doesn't go into infinity. Other than that...
I, I assume if this came from the town manager, the town council has a goal this year to, to go look at the revenues, and make sure they're in line with what they should be. We've actually set some targets to increase some of the revenue, so...
Sounds good. I think, you know, some of these where a thing has gone from two fifty to two seventy-five, the extra twenty-five dollars isn't necessarily gonna be perceivable, on the bottom line, but some of these, you know, per lot or per square foot, those can add up to something. And there certainly is work by our staff to deal with them. So, other than the idea of recommending some kind of a progressive couple-of-year review of this, any other comments that we'd like to do? Is there, oh, let's see, open it up for public hearings. Any public wanna comment?
I'm sitting on.
That guy in the back? Yeah, we're good. So, there are no people in the room who wish to offer comments, so we'll close the public hearing. And with that in mind...
We adopt the planning board fee schedule as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five, zero, zero for that. The bit about, you know, setting a calendar or schedule, whatever, just take it as a suggestion or whatever, I don't think we have to vote on that particular aspect of anything.
I'll let Robert know.
And then, we are at Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report and Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Other Items of Concern. Is there any Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report today?
Just give me one second. I believe we've done some administrative approvals. If we have, it's been like one or two. It's been pretty slow in our department. I know this morning, I just received one, Casey received one the other day, so, just typical business. Yes, we approved one, two, three, four, five, five different ones since the last meeting.
Administrative approvals?
Yep.
Give us a general rundown of the kinds of things?
Yeah, can you give us a rundown?
Yeah, of course. We had a tenant change, another tenant change, I guess they're all tenant changes, and then there was one site change at the YMCA camp on Camp Sergeant Road. They proposed a sixty-by-ten-foot covered porch attached to an existing rec hall. Other than that, the two applications we received lately were for home occupations, for transportation businesses, just formalities.
Questions on the, any of those? Thank you for the update on those.
Yes.
Other discussion items? I have one, if none of you all do. Half of you must be wondering, who's this lady sit next to me, right?
I know her.
You know, yeah, I think you did. I, we, some mention and discussion when we interviewed. So, Karen's been appointed to be a full member of the Planning Board. This is her first meeting that I was attending. I don't know if you went to the previous one, where, where Halene got to chair the meeting, but...
I watched it.
Watched it? Well, welcome, and thank you for volunteering and being a part of our board. It's, without members of our community ready to volunteer and do these things, there's nobody here to do the work. We do, and that'd sort of be my follow-on comment, is that what is our current status for empty seats?
I believe it's three, and it might be even more. I think there might be three members.
On the website, it's one of each.
Let's see. Sorry, bear with me one second.
The website is up to date.
What's that?
Pete's picture's already up there, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it is one full-time and one alternate.
Yep.
Three, four.
Very good, so...
No, two, two full-time, sorry.
Two full-time and one alternate?
Who was, who did we lose?
A lot of people.
Oh, really?
I, I, I know we lost Jamie in September. Actually, let me look at this.
Read the roster of people that are on there. In addition to the people that are here, it's, Halene is missing, and...
John Manuel Lee's missing, Mark Williams.
And Mark has, has Mark submitted his resignation, or was it?
No, it was...
Kevin?
Kevin Peters.
Kevin.
But I didn't count him on our... In any case, we've got open spots.
Yeah.
Please, folks, it's not hard. It's a lot of fun. Two, two nights, come on.
I think it is, it is fun, and you get to know more about the actual details of something that's proposed, rather than relying on the Merrimack Positive Forum for whatever somebody wants to put up there, which is, yeah, probably accurate more often than not, but sometimes you could be missing a detail or three. I would say that you, it would allow you to, you know, inform the forum, but I'm not sure that's a great idea for Planning Board members to be off, sort of resolving the factual misstatements in the world.
Terrific.
I, I don't do it. Although I have to say that Wolf Von Schoen from the Water Department does a fabulous job of posting and answering and weighing in on things. He's really got the art for it. Anyway, if anyone is interested in volunteering to be on the Planning Board, all you gotta do is contact the town council, the town manager's office. I think it's probably Becky?
Yes.
Becky's the right choice. And put your name forward, and then we'll talk to you and find you a seat here. I don't have any other items of concern. Does anybody else have any to discuss? If none, then we are at the approval of the minutes of December seventeen, twenty twenty-four. What is the will of the board?
Since I watched the meeting, I feel capable of moving that we approve the minutes as published.
Is there a second for the motion? You're not turned on.
I'll second it for discussion. I did find some typos, but I'm not gonna...
Those are scrimnas errors, and we don't deal with those.
Okay, the name spelling of Mr. Minor, who's from the Water District, is in several varieties in here, but I knew who it was.
All right, I'll make note of it.
Thank you.
Make note of the correction of the spelling of Ron Minor's name. Any other comments on the minutes? Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining?
Well, I wasn't here, I wasn't a member then.
But you watched it.
Yep. You still can vote the minutes if you want to, but you don't have to.
Okay, um...
It's all completely up to you. That's one of the weird quirks of Robert's Rules of Order, that you do not have to have attended a meeting in order to vote on the minutes.
Even not being a member yet?
Even not even being a member yet.
Oh, okay.
She wasn't a member, then.
As long as you read it.
Yep.
Or watched it, yeah.
Yeah, I watched it, okay.
But it's up to you, you don't, it will still pass the minutes, even if you abstain.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Put five down.
Five, 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 zero, zero. Okay, that's the end of our agenda tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And, count one as the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five, zero, zero. Thank you all. Don't forget to turn your microphones off, and that that one does not go off, so...